Okay. I want to welcome everybody to our February City Council meeting. Mike adjusted it open that way tonight. So can we start out with roll call?
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Hopkins.
Chipman.
Here.
Von Brenner.
Here.
Okay. We'd like to have Dick Solander lead us with our indication.
Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for all the events, the business going to take place, and we thank you for these leaders. We ask that you bless them, take care of them, guide them, and thank you for what they do for our great city. We give praise and thanks in Jesus's name.
Thank you. And Ron McDaniel, will you just begin the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, do we have any commission reports?
Always. Okay, so our... I'll start with Weezer Economic Development, which is really a committee, I guess. But Weezer Economic got together and we are continuing our process. Last month, I announced that we have taken on that logo that the hospital had done for us for that grant. So we've adjusted that, and now we're putting our letters together to send out to the business. We're also working with our Main Street America, and we have gotten a check written and paid for for our third sign over there by Maverick, and we're just waiting for ITV in production, I think, right? To make the final placement as they're making that third sign. So eventually, all three signs will be done, and so we're very excited for that. Our design review committee, we met. We're lacking guidance in a number of things, so we're not going to make for a hot minute because we have nothing to work on at the moment as we wait for official work on a few other things. And so we're taking a break on that, which is okay with me. I'm tired of looking at other cities' policies on design and then going, "Not good enough!" Or "This doesn't fit!" Because that's all that we've done for seven months, and we're... All of us are tired of it, so we're taking a break while we wait for further direction. So that's great. And then, what else do I... what else to report on? There's another one. Well, I'm sorry to that organization because I don't remember right now off the top of my head. If I remember after Mark's report, I'll make it.
Mr. President, on the library, I won't go into too much detail tonight, but I did want to tell you that Dr. Seuss Day is coming up March 3rd, and they're looking for someone to wear the hat and appear at the library. So if anybody is so inclined, that would be great. And then, March 6th, there is a wonderful event sponsored by the library, a birdhouse auction taking place at The Depot. Tickets are $10 to support the library, and there'll be many birdhouses decorated by local artists and baskets and lots of bird-oriented things to buy. So everybody should turn out and support the library, March 6th.
I remembered my third thing.
Okay.
Are you ready? Sorry. So Public Facilities Commission met, right? And so last month, we talked about how that money that we got from the grant, we were figuring out how to improve our parks because that's what it was designed for. We have made some grand decisions, and work has already begun to be made. We're very grateful for the grounds crew who's gone out, and they have already cleared the path. Of course, as soon as they finished clearing it, the snow decided to show back up. So we're halted for a moment, but you'll see a large pad being poured, and then we'll have coverage that will go over it. We also have a quote, I believe, for covering the mother sitting area by the new park equipment. And then we'll see how much money we have left after that to go any further beyond that. But improvements to our park are on their way, and we're very grateful for all the work that's happening there.
Okay, and thank you. We're all grateful for what's going on in our parks right now. Any committee real...
I have one. Sneakerber Economic Development Alliance has a meeting coming up March 7th. It's a breakfast meeting, an economic development meeting for the area. And in my car is a brochure that I was going to give all of you. So since it's still in my car, I guess Natasha passed so soft when I did it to her. Anyway, the theme of the meeting is healthcare, its impact on our economy and on bringing new business to town and all the various implications of that. So 7:00, it's in Ontario, at the Cultural Center, I believe. So if that fits into your schedule, you're certainly welcome to attend. There'll be people from all over the three-county area there. So historically, it's been a good conference, probably 7:00 to 8:30, something like that. I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any committee reports?
Insert economic development comments there.
We never quoted that.
Okay, Natasha, we have department reports?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, this is the department reports for February, not January. The City of Weezer has 51 full-time employees for part-time. The Weezer Police Department had 55 adult arrests, 40 misdemeanor, and 15 felony. There was one misdemeanor juvenile arrest. There was 102 citations, 16 misdemeanor, 35 infraction, and 51 parking. There was 453 calls for service, 71 case reports, 15 felony, 41 misdemeanor for accident, and 11 incident. The City of Weezer Animal Control had 14 dog complaints, impounded two. Two were returned to owners, two were adopted out, and three were transferred out. There were six cat complaints, four impounded, no return to owners or adopted out. The feral cat TNR program did take in two cats. There was one wildlife and one livestock. City of Weezer ordinance complaints, there was one junk and debris, and then Cory did two VIN inspections. The wastewater departments, January flow for 2024 was 31,730,000. January's flow for 2025 was 36,660,000. January's average daily was 1,180,000. Lonnie and the crew ran the belt press, hauled 119 ton of biosolage to Clay Peak, replaced five bearings on the belt press, and took down clarifiers and supercleaned them. The Water Department, water production for January of 2024 was 13,468,000. January of 2025 was 13,864,000. Bill and his crew started annual plant maintenance. They dismantled and cleaned flash mixer and injection manifold. They cleaned and rebuilt the return-to-headwork valve manifold, and they did snow removal at the plant. The Electric Department's power consumption for December 2023 was 5,341,881. December of 2024 was 4,743,990. The Electric Department placed two overhead doors, replaced two overhead doors and openers in the boyar building, installed new underground service at 652 Whiting Avenue, replaced pad mount transformer at the same location, continued underground work at subdivisions on West 9th, trimmed trees for the street department, moved street lighting on paddock from the west side of the road to the east side along the new fence that the school put up. The Street Department did snow removal, sanded and mag when needed, dug out and prepared, prepped Memorial Park for new covered area, removed curb gutter and sidewalk at 45 West Park, started cleanup at the training facility at the soccer complex, repaired and painted picnic tables, trimmed trees on curb line at Memorial Park for new street light. The Rec Department had six... The girls' basketball had six teams this year with games ongoing. Women's volleyball season is going well with five teams. Indoor soccer continues at the Annex Gym. They're going to start early on the swimming pool this year. They have some repairs to do. They are currently taking registration for co-ed volleyball as well as spring soccer. The Building Department had nine building permits this month, four single-family dwellings, one commercial building alteration, two accessory buildings, two dwelling alterations and additions. Dave did 21 inspections and 14 concerts. Mayor and City Council, that concludes your department reports for February 2025.
Let somebody have a comment about the increase of the wastewater versus fresh water.
Well, I wondered where that 20 million gallons of water came from that we didn't make. Is it snow or...?
That and I and I, we get groundwater infiltration pretty heavy. That's why we usually treat almost double of wastewater than we do to water.
Some of that had to do with all the rain and snow we've had?
It does add to it, but that's not too uncommon to have that much difference.
A lot of citations and arrests. Busy month. Busy month.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. We've all had a chance to study the minutes from our January meeting. Have any comments, any corrections at this time?
A motion that we approve them as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the bills.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee, that's what I was thinking. Had a chance to meet and review the bills, and I move that the bills be approved and presented to the Treasury to have warrants drawn for payment.
Well, second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Yeah.
Excuse me. This will be an action item.
Councilmember Blackwell.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Von Brenner.
Yes.
Hahn.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes. You're easily entertained. You're very easily entertained.
Did we load on the minute?
Yeah.
We did, okay. That's right. And at this time, we're going to remove item number three. We're moving it from tonight's agenda. I think they want to go back to the drawing board, and they're just not ready to make the decision on the camera, on the camera truck at this time.
Tabled for another month.
Yep.
Or so.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have our yearly update from Rose Advocates.
Hello, everyone. How are you today, tonight?
Good.
Hanging in there?
Thank you.
Enjoying this freezing weather?
So I am Veronica Vaskis with Rose Advocates and the Executive Director, and I just came to give our yearly update that we share with you every... I think it's January, February, whenever they let us come out to visit. So first of all, Rose Advocates is a nonprofit confidential network that services victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. We also provide victim services for child abuse and for elder abuse. So if there's anybody in that realm or things that they might need any assistance, please reach out to our offices. We do have a lot of collaborating partners within our community. Angel Wayne's Memorial Hospital, Weezer Police Department, the Sheriff Department. We collaborate very well with the Police Department and the sheriffs. We have a monthly CCR team meeting, which is a coordinated community response team to where we go over some of those felonies and misdemeanor cases that we've talked about tonight. We are very blessed this year that we have hired a forensic nurse, Danielle Marvin. She works through Weezer Memorial Hospital, and she has partnered with us to do the sexual assaults here in Washington County. So from our collaborating areas, that if there is a sexual assault in those areas, they bring them here, and she does those exams and then returns all of the evidence to the officer that's on for that report. I'd like to give a shout-out to the LOR Foundation. We were offered a grant from them for an intake room and a remodel to remodel our front area, just to make it a little bit more welcoming and private so when clients come in, they get a really nice little room. So if you guys have a chance to come by, please, please do so. So our numbers for this year, we've had 332 clients. That is 49 up from last year. 288 female and 44 males. We've had an increase in domestic violence at 252. Stocking is down at 48. Teen dating violence is at 46. Child abuse neglect cases are at 44. Bullings at 18, and our adult sexual assault is at 26, which is up this year from last year. We do continue to collaborate with our officers, and we provide trainings as much as we can. We have Angela Weeks come from Idaho State Police come out to the Vin Dome, and she's provided a couple of trainings for all of us there. But we're just going to keep trucking along, and let's just hope that it gets better, not worse. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just sincerely want to thank you for what you guys do.
Well, come on out and support us. We do have our Rose Advocates, Rose Bowl, on the 20th here at the Community Church. Provide a bunch of soups and... Come out and hang out with us. All right, thank you, guys. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two on our agenda is to consider the Eden Law 25 and possibly 26 to 28 contracts. You see in your packet that we... They put in for a renew, and actually came back with a three-year extension if we want to go that way.
Excuse me. So I was just going to say on this, we approved theirs in the budget for this year for the 25 contracts. So that's just that they're not asking for any increase on this one, so 25 contracts.
And is there a three-year contract asking for, I mean, same price, just a 3% increase?
So going forward, yeah, so the 26, 27, and 28 would include a 3% per year, which is like $4,950 over the next three years when you compound it. Which per year, not... That's not per year, that's over the three-year contract would be $4,950 over three years.
An increase of $4,900?
Total over three years.
Over three years.
Spread out over three years.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
No, that's all right.
Is this a calendar year contract?
It's per the season, so I think on there, it's from April to...
Yeah, March 15th. It's close to March 15th until April.
And that all kind of depends on the weather.
Yeah, it's totally weather. And they do the leaf blow-off and everything at Sidney Park and all that stuff for us throughout. Even in November, I believe, this year.
How did they...? How was it this year?
Fantastic. I don't think we've... The comments on the parks this year were wonderful.
We've never had as many compliments on the parks as we did this year.
Okay, I noticed there's a clause in there that either party can cancel with 30 days notice. Is that how we get around our limitation on...
The council on future?
Yeah, as far as, yeah, next year's budget or change of council or whatnot, yeah.
So then, will... I guess, will we address this annually and say, "Yeah, we want to continue"?
I think this would be on terms of we would continue unless somebody had a reason not to. Or it would be approved for the next till the end of the contract, and less the council would come up and ask to get out of it or change it.
We would budget this, though, in...
The next...
Parks and recs of department, it would be a line item in their budget, I assume. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Where is this in the budget?
We would continue to budget till the end of this three-year extension, so we'll actually have this year plus three. And we would just continue to budget forward and go unless the council would come back and say, "This year, we'd like to look at this and not go forward," or council members changed that have questions or whatnot.
Okay, so where is...? Will be a line item in the budget that serves as our review annually?
Correct.
Mr. President, would you like us to do the 2025 contract and then do it separately?
I think we can do it either way, right? Because the second proposal came in, but if you'd like to do it all in one, I believe we could do that.
Then I would move that we approve the Eden Law Care Agreements for 2025 and the 26 through 28 contracts.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the upcoming 25 and the extension 26 through 28. If there's no further comments, we would... This would take an action item. Call for the vote.
Roll call. Councilmember Blackwell.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Von Brenner.
Yes.
Hahn.
Okay. Two times.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're likely said we're skipping item three, moving on to item four, which is to consider Resolution 699 for the surplus office furniture, and this also would be an action item. I think in our packet, we have a list of...
Yep, so Resolution 699 would be the surplus of two large wooden office desks, 40 vinyl-covered chairs from the library, and then miscellaneous wire shelving from the library. And basically, from my understanding from Mike, we would just take it all as a load to auction once it's surplus and just let it go.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 699 as presented here.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 699. Can we call for the vote?
Blackwell.
Yes.
Hahn.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
Von Brenner.
Yes.
Poe.
Okay.
I'll buy a lot of tickets.
More than curious. Item five is to approve the full payment for Idaho Power's judgment against the City of Weezer on the amount of $5,546.91.
So I don't know if you read through the packet on this. It's the... I know Power went through, and they have an operating tax that they use for their power lines and everything that gets taxed by the county, state, whatever. They wanted that reevaluated, and they've got judgment for that, which significantly decreased it. And I think they went back three years if you read through that. The $5,546.91 to pay back to them would be our share of that money. And you can see the breakdown that I put in the packet to show you what everybody else is paying on that. So the county's already paid that amount back. We would just pay the county back that amount of ours share. And instead of breaking it out over three years, it's the smaller amount, we would just do it this year.
So this is a basically property tax that they've paid that has now been adjusted...
Right.
That they didn't know, so we have to pay it back.
Plus interest.
Seems really fair.
Can we work a deal like this?
You can have your taxes reevaluated anytime. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down.
I'm getting a million-dollar bonus.
Well, I mean, for this dollar, it certainly makes sense. Is there any reason why we should...
I... Splitting it up over the years that they give us just didn't make sense to me on this smaller amount. I gave you a breakdown of the funds that would pay it and how much each fund would pay. We can, and you guys are more than welcome, we can break it down and do it over the next, I believe, three years they give us to pay it back, but...
Almost like two, just for spite, but for five grand, I think.
Okay, how does this affect those departments that we're taking that money out of? The street, that's 13%, library, it's 9%. Like, how...
So what I did was I took the funds themselves and divided out the percentage of each fund that gets tax money to get those percentages. I didn't take it out of the TORT because that affects a lot of other departments, so I took the other 1% that the TORT would have was a 5% also, and added 1% to each one to cover the TORT fund that's missing because the TORT fund pays for our insurance, but it also would affect non-taxing entities if we did it out of the TORT fund. So that's how we have... That's how I got those percentages.
Let me... I'll rephrase my question. I'm sorry. How do... How does the street department feel about like this hit to their budget?
The 700...
Yeah, will they be able to work through and not...
Yes, yeah, $721 is...
They're going to be okay?
They're going to be okay.
Because it's a tight year already, so I just want to make sure that we're not saying, "Oh, by the way, no gas."
Right. The general fund is taking the largest, as you can see. And it's probably harder for the general fund than even the other ones because of the amounts. But we can definitely make it work.
I just want to make sure.
Absolutely.
So our payment actually goes to Washington County, correct?
Yes, we will pay this back to Washington County because they've already paid everybody's back out of the tax revenue. They paid for all these, so you'll pay back Washington County now.
Are they taxing us or charging an interest on our...?
Mr. President, I would move that we repay the county for the full payment for the Idaho Power judgment in the amount of $5,546.91.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Chipman.
Yes.
Von Brenner.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
And Hahn.
Mr. President.
Okay, item... Oh, excuse me.
Everybody's awake.
I'm waking everybody up. Item six is to approve the timing for enacting the city policies in alignment with state and federal laws policy. I guess this gives the city the right to enforce these laws as they come down. Is that correct?
Yep, and just that in a timely manner, we will... Any policy that is changed by a state or federal law, we will, in a timely manner, go in and update our policies to be equal to the state and federal laws.
Will that then come back in front of us, or this covers that?
This covers that. This is saying that the council is giving permission to update our policies per state and federal regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the timing for enacting city policies in alignment with state and federal laws policy.
All second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Again, we'll call for the roll call.
Von Bren... Councilmember Von Brenner.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Hahn.
Okay, okay. Motion carries. We'll be moving on. Next, we're going to update the council on the truck repairs for the sewer department.
So unfortunately, the sewer department's truck that they haul solid waste to pay it has lost an engine. We took it in thinking it was a head leak, and it turned out that the head was bad, and then when they got in, the cylinders and everything. So it's what they call a full inframe. We chose to go ahead and do this because that is our only truck that can make that trip like that, and I didn't want to have you guys see a $35,000 bill without knowing what it was. It's a large expenditure, but we couldn't replace the truck for that. It was kind of the "have to be done at this time." And the longer I waited, the longer it was going to take to get it done. So I just wanted to update you guys on that.
$35,000 to find an engine that we lost.
Just to build, yeah, yeah, there you go. I never thought of that one.
Thank you, Mike.
Good detective work.
I motion... No, there's no motion.
It was just an update.
Thanks for talking about it. That's great.
Okay, line item eight, the LOR Foundation grant presentation.
So I just kind of wanted to update the council on the LOR Foundation and what they have done for the community through the City of Weezer in the last year, actually, starting... The first one we received was in 2023. So I think there's a couple that I missed, but just because they were through the police department, and I don't have paperwork on them. So the number is a little bit higher than the 132,654, but that's amazing in grants. So the first one we received was... And if you guys have questions or anything at any time, feel free to stop me. The TNR program, the Trap, Neuter, and Release, is a program designed to trap spay and release feral cats to reduce the population and help control disease in the Weezer community. And that grant was for $9,991. The baseball field improvement was a grant to purchase and install field conditioner to soften the clay so the fields are safe to run and slide on. That grant was for nine thousand, six hundred dollars. The recreation expansion was to purchase equipment to ensure hundreds of kids can safely participate in Weezer recreation programs for years to come. So this grant included all new soccer nets, footballs, baseballs, volleyballs, any program that is through the rec department, we were able to get new equipment for. And that grant was for seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight. So the Lions concession air conditioner, the reason that the money came through us is because it's on city property, so the money filtered through us to pay for the air conditioner for the Lions concession booth at Memorial Park, and that grant was for five thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. The Bridge to Bridge grant is to create a pathway for walkers and bikers to get from one side of town to the other safely. And so it starts at the Snake River, or the Idaho side, goes all the way to the Oregon side, and it basically follows the river along there. You can access it through the pond as well as Jim Reed's property by the, where the RV park is. And that grant was for nineteen thousand, seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. We also have partnered with a local trail company up out of Cambridge to help with some of that, so. The police canine unit safety equipment was to purchase safety vests so that our canine dogs and officers are safe while on duty. That grant was for nine hundred and ninety dollars. Solar flashing crosswalk equipment, purchase equipment to make Weezer crosswalk safer. And so we're going to focus on State Street and a couple on Park Street. And that grant was for twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. The swimming pool safety and accessibility, this is to purchase equipment to allow more residents to use the pool and bathroom safely. I believe it includes new water heaters for the bathrooms, some stall replacement, and then also new stairs to go into the pool. That grant was for twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. Local police safety training, this grant was to purchase training equipment so our, our police can hold local training, and that grant was for nine thousand dollars. The pond and pathway trip, how to say that? Is to build a tile mosaic sign at the pond and pathway to educate residents on the native plants and animal species that are in and around that public area. And we have two local artists that are going to be doing that for us. Again, the money was just kind of filtered through the city because it will be on city property. And that grant was for six thousand, five hundred. The COP safety equipment and training, that went towards traffic control and flagger certification classes for the COPs, and also vests, I believe, and then the purchase of ID kits to assemble for the children of Weezer. That grant was for a thousand dollars. The police department also got a grant for rescue diving equipment, and that's a purchase water diving equipment for emergency water rescue in all seasons. That grant was for nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. The Christmas parade, there was a sponsorship made to purchase candy for Santa to throw, and also to purchase some additional lighting. Future projects include, we're going to try to finish the pavement around the pond, so the asphalt will go completely around the pond and not stop at the far end of it. We're looking into a generator for the Vendome for an emergency gathering place. We're also looking into water fill stations around Weezer. So those are just some of the projects that we're looking into. I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update on the Lower Foundation this year.
So they wanted to make a difference in Weezer, and they're sure doing that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, amazing.
And again, that's just the stuff that goes for us.
That's just what the city of Weezer has received.
Am they available how much longer?
I think the total was four years.
I think it's two more years.
Yes. Another one is, I believe, that the after-school program got a grant for supplies and stuff at the, at the greenhouse room, at the after-school program.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you for that report.
Yep.
Okay, I don't think we are going to have any communication with legal counsel or anything tonight on executive second. Although that, we do need a roll call on that, right?
No, it's, it's just on the agenda in case we need it, it'll be on every agenda moving forward.
I just didn't know if we needed to vote not to.
No.
Okay. Okay, I think we're at number ten already, which is adjournment.
My motion to Weezer.
Okay, motion and second.
Aye.